First of which is to recognize a lady that has, that the recognition is long overdue. Maureen Barton, if you'll come forward please. For those that may not know, Maureen is the, a member of the Louisville Civic Club. Should I ask how many years, maybe?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years, and she has been the lady for the last, how many years?
Fourteen years.
There's some way that they kind of, they appoint the newcomers, I guess, to lead positions. Yes, initiate. But Maureen has, has been the person that's been in charge of the Louisville Christmas Parade for the last fourteen years. And we want, we want to say that you've done an excellent job. By your leadership and direction and certainly your hard work.
Thank you.
You have made it a signature of our town. That we're, we're known across this, this end of the state, really and truly, for our parade and certainly for all of the entrances, I guess, all the entrances.
Yes.
Yeah, that are, that are there. But, and like I say, it's a long time in coming, the recognition that we should have given you many years ago, Maureen, but this is a certificate of appreciation given by the town of Louisville to Maureen Barton, in grateful recognition of her leadership, dedication, and commitment directing the Louisville Civic Club Parade for fourteen years for the citizens of Louisville. Thank you so much for all you've done for Louisville.
Thank you, ma'am. I can't talk very good, I have bronchitis, but I'd just like to accept this on behalf of the Louisville Civic Club. My parade committee, they've worked with me for the last fourteen years and made this possible. Also, the town staff, this would not be possible without the town staff of Louisville. We all worked together with the deputies and the community police officer to make this possible. This year, we had a challenge, having to move the parade, which we'd never done before, and it was possible to do that because all of our working parts worked with all of their working parts, and we made it possible to be able to bring the parade together for the citizens, so that I accept this on behalf of everyone who participated in that makes this possible, as well as the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other presentation tonight, and it's a, a time of joy and a time of sadness, really and truly. Mr. John Lauter, if you'll come forward please. For the past ten years, John has been a very integral part of this citizen participation in this, this town. He's served five years on the zoning board of adjustment, five years on the Louisville planning board, the last, how many is chair? Felt like twenty.
Twenty.
I'm sorry to hear that. I walked into that room, sorry.
I think it was, Sandy, how long you been on the council? Three? Three.
Three.
Okay, I was thinking so. But he has given leadership to, to, to that body. They've done tremendous amount of work for the town. You know, the growth and development, it really comes through the planning board and then on to the, to the town council. So, so much of that has been with John's leadership, and we appreciate so much, John, the, the leadership that you've given the town, all your, your, the time and the talent that you've imparted to the town, and it's been great. John has had a, with the good fortune of having some added responsibility in, in his professional work, that's taken him away from Louisville, on the ability to serve on the, the planning board. So it's not that he has, they're not leaving Louisville, at least I hope not, and so I don't think that was the case, but the career opportunities have demanded so much of his time at this point in time that he's no longer able to serve. And of course, he resigned his position effective at the end of December of 2013. So this is a certificate of appreciation presented to John Lauter, recognition of ten years meritorious service to the town of Louisville. And as I mentioned, five years on the zoning board of adjustment, five years on Louisville planning board. Thank you so much, John, for all of your time, all of your efforts.
First of all, I'd like to thank my family. Took a lot of time away from them, and they were very supportive all the way through. Want to thank the town staff and town council. Been a real pleasure working with them. Sandy was the chair when I was on, served with that as well. I think everybody in the council go on the planning board at one point or another, so they know what the, the job is all about. It's been a real pleasure. Marty, it's been great working with you, and thanks for all your support and for the well breakfast, the planning breakfast, which we're, which I'm gonna miss. And it really, it's been a pleasure. Louisville, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, it's a great place to live, and hopefully we'll be able to do something in the future.
Well, thanks, and great part, you've made it a good place to live.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, ma'am. We do, we do not have any introductions or other proclamations tonight, so that takes us down to the public forum. This is the... This is the first of two opportunities that we have on each of our council meetings for the public to come forward and to address the council. What we ask is that you come to the, the microphone, that you state your name and your address, and that we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We're here to hear what you have to say, we're here to, to listen, and, but actually not to enter into discussion or to debate any, any particular issue that might be brought forward at, at this time. Doesn't mean that we don't pay attention, it doesn't mean that we won't do due diligence on, on the issue itself, but it's just not, this is not the forum for it at, at our regular meeting. We have one member that has signed up. Ms. Laura Holby?
Holby.
Not even close, I'm sorry.
Might have been over even right.
Yeah. About that, I can't interpret it well.
My name is Laura Holby. I'm new with Navite Health, so I just wanted to come, my role with Navite's new as well. We've recognized that there's an importance in community wellness and community health and making sure that your community's healthy, so my role is dedicated to this area. So you're gonna be seeing me out and about and around, and I really just wanted to come and introduce myself and let you guys know that we're here and we realize that, you know, we're a part of this community, so I just wanted to introduce myself, so I look forward to getting to know everybody in this community, trying to move this way myself, so. Too good to see you. Yes. But thank you guys so much for having me, I appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. Thank you for introducing yourself, and thank you for being in our community in a, in a very valued role.
Thank you, I'm excited.
Look forward to getting to know you better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this town that didn't sign up that would like to address council on any issue or any topic that you might have on your mind? We will close the, the first public forum, and we'll remind you that there are forums at the rear of the chambers that, if you'd like to submit written comments, you can also do that, that method of communicating to us. So we'll go to the next item.
The next section is?
Section five, for purchases and contracts, there are none this evening. The next is boarding committee appointments, there are none as well for this evening. Moving on to whole business, there is none to report this evening. Brings us to Roman numeral eight, public hearings, we do have a case. Case for L dash zero seven four, request to rezone sixty-four oh seven Shalford Road from RS twenty residential LC one dash S miscellaneous office, professional office, non-store retailer, and neighborhood organization. And the first in this is staff presentation.
Mayor, council, happy new year.
Happy new year to you.
We have with us this evening case LO seven four, which is the property of Stephen J. Fixx located at sixty-four oh seven Shalford Road. They're requesting that the property be rezoned from RS twenty residential to LD one S Louisville Downtown District. The site itself is relatively level, as the maintenance of the property is very, very good in that it's well-kept, has a well-kept lawn, and large trees are maintained on the site, which add to the tree canopy for the downtown. It has available, available to it, but water and sewer out in Shalford Road. The transportation aspects of this request, as I indicated, the, the grade of this site is a little higher than Shalford Road, there's a three to foot, three to four foot high wall, access that is directly off of Stire Street, and as part of our review of this rezoning, Mr. Hauser and I, your public works director, looked at it by way of the town's access management ordinance, have indicated to the owner, and this will be reflected on their site plan that you'll look at a little later, a, an amendment to their existing driveway situation, and that historically, there was a drive or a portion of the drive that came out very, very close to Shalford Road from Stire Street, and we felt like that that was just entirely too close to remain in that, in that condition, so we have asked that the owner consider, and in fact, he has done so and has agreed to remove a good portion of that paved area to eliminate and prevent people from coming out onto Stire Street in such a close proximity, in such close proximity to Shalford Road. As part of the town, town staffs and planning boards review of this site, obviously, we look at relevant zoning cases, we have those provided for you as part of the staff report. One of the things that we did talk about was the nature of the business, and we spoke to this, I think briefly, at the, at your briefing meeting last Thursday. Mr. Cornelius has one employee, and he's a very low-volume generator of traffic into and out of the site. Not that he's not staying busy, in fact, he just told me this evening that he stays very busy, but it's just not a business that at this time is generating a lot of pedestrian traffic or vehicle, vehicle traffic into and out of the site, so because of that, we originally looked at the UDO for what it would require for this type of business, and that was six parking spaces. The applicant has asked for the thirty percent reduction, which is allowed in LD one S, and the planning board saw fit to approve that or recommend that to you favorably, so he is asking for the thirty percent reduction, which will reduce his total number of parking spaces from six to four, and they are then shown and indicated on the site plan as how that would be accommodated. We also looked at it as part of our review for its conformity plans, we looked at it, we compared it against the Louisville Comprehensive Plan update of 2010, in that it lies within an area designated as downtown mixed use. The plan describes this area as a key for establishing a common community focus and identity for Louisville, with a diverse mix of uses, commercial office, entertainment, residential institution uses. The plan discusses both permitted uses and design considerations to reinforce a pedestrian-oriented concept of development. The LD one S district language allows for the adaptive reuse or repurposing of existing residential dwellings. There are a number of examples along Shalford Road where this has occurred. According to the applicant, his thought is to rezon the site to business for limited offices. Parking, buffering, and building code changes will be made to the existing site to accommodate this, this existing and new use. Can recall that. He understands that should the property be sold and other uses solved, a new rezoning would be required, and a new site plan would be required with that new rezoning that would better reflect what was being thought of at that time. For that reason, we feel like that this plan does complement and comply with the recommendations of the Louisville Comprehensive Plan update of 2010. As part of our review, we also checked it against the Louisville, or the Legacy Development Guide of 2012, and legacy recommends the enhancement of downtowns, of smaller towns within the county, including Louisville, and as part of that enhancement, this use would be compliant or in keeping with what that prescribes as well. The applicant is requesting a change from RS twenty to LD one S zoning. A site plan has been submitted which shows how the site may need to be modified to accept this, this future small office use. The current tenant operates a very low-volume accounting business, having only one employee, I think the staff report says two, but it's only one, I guess he has a second one. The business generates very little cost per foot traffic because of this, or because of this, they are asking for the thirty percent parking reductions allowed for this site. Given the square footage, the usable square footage in the dwelling, a total of six parking spaces would be required, and as we've just said, that could be reduced to two, to four, if you folks were to pick up on the planning board's recommendation and recommend the thirty percent reduction. Our findings are that the applicant, as he requests this rezoning for adaptive reuse of a single-family residential dwelling to a non-residential use on seven point seven two acre site, is compliant with the town standards within UDO, as well as the comprehensive plan and legacy plan. The request complies with all other plans that are applicable to the downtown and to the town of Louisville, and that we checked for you the site plan against the requirements of the UDO, and have found those conditions have been fully included in that site plan that you will be considering this evening. As part of North Carolina general statute law, we're supposed to have a consistency of the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan statement that is found for you, I guess, on the last, next to the last page of the staff report, and it states that effective January one, two thousand and six, GS one sixty-eight three eighty-three requires the planning board and town council to include written comments, and as indicated in the staff report earlier, we find that it is compliant with those plans as adopted. Staff recommends approval, the site plan was also recommended for approval by staff with conditions, and the planning board recommendation is for approval for both the rezoning and the site plan, and their motion was unanimous to recommend it favorably to this council.
We should have, or I should have mentioned before Marty started the staff presentation that we're having audiovisual problems tonight with our system, and weren't able to project on the, on the board, the, the site plan itself, and so we apologize for that, that situation. I think council members, it is available in your top box, your...
Okay, yes, you can blow it up if needed.
Is there any question of the planner concerning any of his presentation?
During the public hearing, planning board discussion, were there any concerns expressed by any of the leaders?
No.
Not at all. Anyone else have anything?
Thank you, Marty.
If I may, I would like to give John a heartfelt thank you for everything that you've done, and when you said he was a, a leader for the planning board, for the, for the use that he was serving, certainly, or in either of the board adjustments, well, I would agree with that, or Marty, and thank you again for everything.
Okay, we will open the public hearing for the rezoning request for, from RS twenty residential to LD one S miscellaneous office, professional office, non-store, ever, neighborhood organization. Is there anyone at this time that would like to come forward and address, let us hear your comments concerning this request? Either for or against? Yes? If you would just state your name and your address and...
Steve Fixx, and you spend in North Carolina, but it's really he and I just right across the river. I just wanted to thank you for your time and for coming out tonight and allowing me to present this to you as the mayor and the board, and I appreciate your cooperation with the town up to this point in dealing with this matter, as Marty said. It was operating under a home office permit, but it's just gotta be upgraded to LD one, and that's what we're asking you to do. We did not ask for anything that would cause problems down the road, by that, I mean, we only ask for things that fit the site as it exists today. I didn't ask for anything that would require a lot of modification, because at some point in time, I may not own the property, and whoever buys it, I'm sure will have different uses for it, and they'll need to come see you ladies and gentlemen with this at that point in time. So just really trying to maintain the property, be able to keep it up, and at this point, make it a legacy property to my children. I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have about property.
Thank you, Mr. Fixx.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council concerning this request? Okay, we will close the public hearing and go to council discussion. Any discussion by council?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second?
We're gonna add that condition, uh, condition approving the parking reduction from six to four.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought that was, I thought that's the way it was presented.
I thought that part was special. So now, let's make sure we got this, our...
Motion to approve.
Thes crossed, nighs dotted.
Motion to approve the zoning case before us with the special use condition to reduce the parking from six to four. Please say.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, you may. Thank you, Mr. Fixx.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for addressing my committee.
Okay, your next one?
Okay, the next is unfinished business. This is, I'll explain how it is unfinished business in a minute, okay? It's ordinance two zero one four zero zero four, amending budget ordinance two zero one three zero one three, an amount of ten thousand dollars to transfer funds from the general fund to the grant capital projects fund for Louisville Vianna Road sidewalk extension to contract with Davenport Engineering to provide construction specs and bidding documents and process. Why this is old business is that I told you last month and then at the briefing last week, that I would have a proposal ready, the proposal is ready. The proposal is not for ten thousand dollars, it's for nine thousand, but there's the possibility as we move forward, there may be incidental charges, it may be incurred that are outside of the scope of the agreement that we have with Davenport, and instead of coming back for a hundred dollars here, two hundred dollars there, we went ahead and made the budget ordinance amendment for ten thousand to allow for anything that may crop up along the way as we move through the project.
Any questions of the manager concerning this ordinance?
One quick question, this one is coming from the general fund. Is it not appropriate for it to come from the capital reserve for sidewalks?
I think we anticipated that. Kathy, you want to answer that?
Yes, sir, I mentioned to, I mentioned to Hank this morning about the possibility of a question coming up as to whether we want to use our sidewalk reserve. That was one of the funds that we did not include the transfer this year in the budget, and I felt like that until the board had an opportunity at either financial part of our retreat to discuss your philosophies on that reserve fund and how much was in, in it already, and if you wanted to continue funding the reserve, the use of the reserve funds in the future, at this point in time, we will take it from the general fund balance. And at such time, again, when we will amend this project fund, later on, there will be an amendment to transfer from the general fund, the balance needed after we get the bids in to see how much the project costs are. The ordinance that's behind this, the fund ordinance, you'll notice that it was set up for originally a hundred thousand, however, this was back in oh nine, and then since then, we've had twelve thousand five hundred transferred for to pay Davenport for the design of the project. At that point in time, we only transferred the twenty thousand actual funds into the project fund because we did not know how much the project would cost. It's an eighty-twenty grant, and so since there will be budget amendments coming before you after we get the bids in on the project, hopefully by then, the town will have had their retreat, your financial discussions will be over, and at that time, you can discuss possible transfers from the reserve. And if at that time, because of the fact that this project will not be completed by then, the money will not have been spent, if you decide later to use those reserve funds to move into this project account instead of the general fund, if no dollars has been spent out of this ten thousand, at that point in time, we'll transfer it back.
What's our balance in our sidewalk capital reserve? Just kinda run along with you, but I slipped off the road about halfway through the explanation.
The bottom line is we're gonna address this during our financial retreat.
Okay. And I guess, I guess the, the appearance, I guess, the, the gold having capital reserves that we've set up for sidewalks and streets and, and buildings and sewer and all the other things that we put capital reserve monies in is handled like this, so I'm just curious as to why we wouldn't use that money that we've been setting aside in that, in that reserve to go ahead and take care of the expenses, to keep it a real clean kind of exchange.
I think the council needs as a group to discuss the philosophy of the usage of the reserve to continue the reserve funding and all that before we actually move and make amendments to move from the reserve. Like I said, hopefully by the time you have that discussion, then the future amendments will be made from the reserve if that's your desire. If not, if we've not spent any of this ten thousand, it will be moved back to general fund.
Is there, is there enough in the, I guess, what is the balance of the sidewalk fund? Sidewalk capital reserve?
Around a little over seventy-seven thousand.
Okay, so we don't have enough to, to fulfill the full project with the funding that's in there currently, so it's gonna require some transfer from the general fund if we decide we wanna complete this?
That's correct, and I wanted to wait till we got the bids in to see what the total project cost was being.
How long, how long has it been since we've not funded the sidewalks?
I think possibly at least two years. I, I would have to check on that, Councilman Owen.
Okay, and I guess I'm just verifying that the philosophy of having the capital reserves, and we fund them on a regular basis, is to be able to handle expenditures like this that come in that are specifically designated for a particular project, and by not having funded the sidewalk capital reserve as we've held in pass, we're short to be able to do. So you're trying to clean it up to make it a much more simpler transaction when all the bills finally come in?
Yes.
One of the advantages of doing the general fund is that you depend what you need, when you need it, rather than out of the capital reserve. I, I don't know if we've ever spent any money out of that particular capital reserve, have we?
You have to amend, you can't spend monies directly out of the reserve. You have to amend, you can't spend monies directly out of the reserve. Amendment has to be made to move the monies to a project to spend it. And I think that's what Councilman Owen was referring to, is that at some point in time, the goal was for the reserve to fund projects. And however, we have not met the goal of the total funds to be accumulated in the reserve when you originally set it up. So, we'll have that, some more discussion on that hopefully at our financial retreat.
How did we pay for the, which fund did we pay that covered the sidewalk to the Jack Martin Park? I think it came from the general fund, if I'm not mistaken.
I would have to look back.
I may be wrong.
I'm, I just, off the top of my head, I can't tell you that.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't want to say something that's wrong.
That means the answer wouldn't lead to anything different. Okay, we've got ordinance 2014004. Any other questions of the manager or of the finance director?
Our total consulting fees for this particular 1,300-foot of sidewalk?
It's 1,100 feet.
1,100-foot sidewalk is $25,000. The 22 in design and the missed 9 are 10.
The original payment to Davenport for everything prior to this was $12,500.
And this will be an additional line for that same stretch of sidewalk? So, it's probably going to be $21,000 consultant fees for the 1,100 feet of sidewalk?
That's correct. We will probably incur some advertising costs. And like I said, once we get bids in to see what the actual construction cost is going to be, we'll know more about how much monies we're going to need. The $1,000 I'm moving right now, if it's not needed for incidentals that come up going through this project, then we'll probably move that into a line I've created for advertising costs.
This is, the 80-20 match is coming from an SBD 8 grant.
That's correct.
And I'm not sure, if my memory is correct, but I'm not sure you could take engineering out of SBD and reversible, reversible, reimbursable funds. Is that correct?
That's correct. None of this money is reimbursable.
Yeah.
When we get the bids in, we will determine the total cost of the project, which will include CEI expenses. We will, we'll hire somebody for that. The CEI has to be at least, or cannot be any more than 15% of the project, but it can be reimbursable. So...
That's, that's construction oversight.
That's correct. And so, whatever the total project cost is, will be the construction and the CEI. And so, construction will be reimbursable first. Our grant was for $115,000 total, so the 80-20. So, we'll take whatever construction costs come out of it first to get reimbursed. And if there's a sufficient amount left in the grant funds to be reimbursed, we'll use that for the CEI.
So, I just want to be, I want to be sure that I have my head around all the dollars here. We've got $21,000 now consulting fees through engineering and bid development and all of, all of the things that work with Davenport. Potentially, we'll have another up to 15%?
We'll have a, if the project costs $100,000, it'll be $15,000 for CEI.
And is that fixed, is that, is that 15% fixed regardless of what the project costs?
Right.
Okay, so it, it's, am I seeing like $35,000?
Yes, it was estimated that originally, when this was sent to STBDA application, it was estimated to be $115,000.
Right.
That's the STBDA, STPDA funds. The $12,500 you spent already is not reimbursable, and this that you're approving tonight is not reimbursable.
So, in real people's money, we've got without the turning, because it's kind of all tax dollars, depending on how it flows, we've got 30, up to $35,000 in consultant fees for a $100,000 project. That's awfully expensive.
Is that what required by the grant folks? All those engineering fees?
No, let's clarify this. The $12,500 was when we originally designed the project, okay? The fees that you're approving tonight are for, instead of the manager and anyone else here, and Hank, you can clear this up if I say it wrong. This is to design the specs to bid out the project.
Bid the project, sure.
And get us through the bidding process, review the bidders, and all that. The only part it doesn't, through that process, is, is pay for the advertising costs.
Can Davenport do the construction oversight? Are they capable of doing that as part of their services?
That would be debated...
I'm probably asking the wrong person. Can, can Davenport do the construction oversight as part of its scope?
It's a separate project. It can't be done as part of this scope. The CEI cannot be authorized for seeking a CEI until after the project has been approved. The plan specifications, estimates have all been done. They say you're ready to go. Then you can advertise for a CEI. By design, the design engineer on the project that did the work may not bid on the construction oversight.
So, that's my statement.
Yes, that's my statement.
Just kind of... DOT frowns on that stuff.
Just kind of says...
Statutes for...
It's out there. I just ran some rough numbers. 1,100 feet is what we're putting in, $115,000. That's 100, almost $105 on any year foot for sidewalk. That's remarkable.
Think you're in the wrong business?
Well, I just know, and some of the ones, and I have to go back and look, but I think the last one project I did, I got eight months of foot is what I paid. It's been, it's been a couple of years since I did that one, but I'm going to go back and look tonight and guarantee it. That's unbelievable. Just FYI.
Any other questions, audience? What's the pleasure of ordinance 2014004? Do I have a second? I'll second. Any further discussion?
Point of discussion, if, and again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Ms. Bruce, I'm not trying to be a foreign in anybody's side here, but I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble getting my head around the higher costs that it seems we're paying. $35,000 for consultant fees. It's 30, roughly 35% of the total project is going into consultant fees for our sidewalk project. Granted, of the $115,000 plus potentially the 15% that we use for construction inspection can be reimbursed through the SBD and funding if we have it. We don't, the actual, we don't know the actual cost of the project, just to your point, because we haven't gone out to bid with it.
That's correct.
If I could just add in our discussion here, we need to be really, really, really sharp on our repackages and talking with contractors to do this project. Because even though it's not our tax money in Louisville, it is our tax money coming from state funding sources, so they're all tax dollars. I just think we spent a lot of money for 1,100 feet of sidewalk. So, and there, sometimes there tends to be a tendency by contractors to build in a little extra margin because it's going with contracts. If we can be really, really, really sharp on this thing, and we can't do anything, I'm guessing, is the 15% negotiable on the construction inspection?
The 15% is a cap.
Okay, so it isn't...
By, by the DOT. It can be less, but it can't be more.
Okay, and we're getting multiple bid, we will get multiple bids for the, for the construction oversight?
That's correct.
Okay, so conceivably, we, maybe if we weren't really, really sharp, we'd get that cost down. It seems that it's like a game, that they want to give you the, the grant, the money, but they want to find every possible way to not, you know? And that's really what you're paying for with all that crazy engineering, it seems to me.
The, a little bit about these projects, just to give you some information about this. The kind of thing, the cheaper these projects go, the harder it is to find the CEI work.
Yeah.
Because there is a certain amount of fixed cost that goes with an oversight of the project. If it's a $500,000 roundabout, that work is not five, is not five times as much it is, as it is than the $100,000 sidewalk, you know? So, the fixed costs are still there. The 15% of the project is a lot more forgiving on the roundabout project. The cheaper projects are actually harder to find people to get to do the work because they just can't afford to do it.
Be better if we run the mile of sidewalk.
That's right.
Would we be better off in the future not to accept grants and do it on our own?
There, there is a mode of thought out there that I think we need to give a lot of, of attention to in the future. When we're choosing projects, we need to be mindful of facts like this. A lot of times, the cheaper, smaller projects are not the best utilization of these types of funds.
Yeah.
For these very reasons.
Thank you for indulging.
Very good questions and discussion. Will we have a motion and a second? Are there any other discussion?
Call the question.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ordinance 2014004 has been approved. Next item?
Okay, the next is a companion. I'm going to defer immediately to Kathy Bruce on this one. This is ordinance 2014005, amending the Louisville-Viana Road Sidewalk Extension Project ordinance to reflect these changes.
This is just a technical follow-up. Anytime that you make changes to the grant funds, you have to amend the ordinance to do that. Ms. Walker, just informing, there's an error on the project total on the ordinance for section two. It should state 122,500, 122,500. So, with that correction, I would ask that you approve this because this includes the $10,000 that you just did the budget amendment for.
With that changed, the totals are correct. What you're saying? Okay. Understand what this ordinance is all about or what the reason is? What's the pleasure of council?
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the last second. That ordinance passes. New business?
Thank you.
Okay, new business. We have resolution 2014002. This is accepting highway improvement funding for the Louisville-Viana Road Sidewalk Project, same project. Lots of things on this project this evening. This is a similar project or a, a document that the council adopted last month for the GWR. This is formalizing the grant funding with the State of North Carolina DOT.
This goes back to the original approval of your application that you submitted and that the approval from the STBDA committee approved your $115,000 grant. But this has to go before DOT, so to do this project, you have to approve this.
Okay. This is just cleanup work, is that what we're saying?
It's another technicality that DOT requires.
I'm looking for approval of resolution 2014002. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. To the second opportunity of tonight's meeting for the public to make comments to the council. Rules are the same as in the previous forum. That anyone in the audience that'd like to make a, or make a statement or bring forward an issue that's important to the individual, please do so. Ask that you come forward to the microphone, that you state your name, your address. Let it your comments to three minutes. And as before, we will not enter into discussion or debate concerning that particular, or any particular issue. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address council at this time? Well, we'll close the public comments section, the final public comment section. And again, we do have forms that are written for written comments, if you wish to use that method. That brings us to council comments for tonight's meeting. Any comment of the council?
Just, just one thing, I don't know, I just feel, I'm just going to tell you, I feel kind of convicted. I don't know how... $105 is a linear foot is outrageous. And we've just got to be better stewards of the taxpayers' money in the future. And, you know, I pay state taxes, I pay federal taxes, and I pay local taxes. And so, I've texted a couple of my project managers to find out what my calls for, but I got to tell you, I, I've never touched a project where we did $105 a foot. And I understand that it's DOT, it's not us, and it's all this other stuff, but I think we need to come up with a strategy, like you said, Hank, about, we need to, we need to find out where the sweet spot is in terms of where it's wise for us to take...
Large projects, really, truly.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Like, there's, there's a, there's a number. I don't know if it's $100,000, or if it's a million, or if it's $5 million. There's a sweet spot where we get a good return for investment. This, this isn't a good one. So, just...
I agree with you. Councilman Zicker, it's like driving an hour to the store to buy a local food or driving an hour to the store to buy a whole week's worth of groceries.
That's right. That's exactly right. So, anyway, I said my piece.
Comments from any of the council members? Okay. Well, we thank you and the audience tonight for coming to tonight's meeting. With that concludes the agenda items that we had. And I will now ask for a motion for adjournment. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.